This time I'd like to call to order the city council meeting on Monday, May 3, 2021. We'll start with a moment of reflection, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, council, you've had an opportunity to review the council study session minutes of April 19th and the council meeting minutes of April 19th. Are there comments or corrections? Being none, they stand approved. We have no communications, petitions, or awards, nor do we have a public hearing. And that brings us to comments from interested citizens. If anyone would like to make comment, please step to the podium, state your name and address for our record, and your comment. And if there's anyone on the line that would like to speak, go ahead and raise your hand.
Hi, this is Holly Wiggins. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Wiggins.
I'm at 660 Castle Creek Drive. I'm here as a representative of Dayton Power and Light. I wanted to let the community know that we've got a nonprofit organization called Tree Cover- Retreat coming to town, and we launched in partnership with MBRPC and the Dayton Foundation and Dayton Power- or AES Ohio, excuse me, a tree recovery campaign. So there will be a period of time that we're raising funds so that we can go out and retreat, we'll organize this and brings in arborists and buys trees locally and replants trees in those neighborhoods where there was devastation from the tornadoes. Vandelia is one area that they are targeting. They are looking at Sinclair Park as a major place, and then all those neighborhoods surrounding it, Trotwood and Brookville as well. So it's going to be community-wide. It will probably take two years to plant the trees. They'll start this fall. So I wanted to make you all aware of that, that citizens who are interested can donate. You can- there was a press release. I can send the links so that if somebody calls and wants to do a donation, there's also a link for those residents and businesses who do want a tree, they can apply for one. So there's an online application. I will send that as well to the city so that you can share that with citizens and businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak?
If I notice who I am and what I'm trying to do, trying to open stubbies.
All right, please state your name for the record.
Doug Rentsch. I would like if anybody here at the end of the council meeting could sit for a minute so I can talk to everybody in here, not everybody out here, so I can get a game plan because it's costing me a lot of money to put a business back in this town. That's all I ask. I'm being very polite.
I would just- I would just call- I would just request and call to a point or ask for a point of order from the law director in that, in that is there anything with regard to the Ohio Open Meetings Act that would prevent such an action at the end of the council meeting?
Yeah, it would be something that would have to be discussed in an open meeting.
Okay, we can do it right now. I don't have time to keep- I'm putting money out into drawings permits, doing things here and there that I'm not sure I'm going to get back. That place is going to be what it kind of used to be, a very nice but upscale place. Not going to be a drug haven, not nothing. And I'm looking at you, and that's all I want, is to open it back to what it was. There's a variance now that I got to meet? No. I'm 158 feet total. You got hairless hair down there, then you put a patio on the end of it. Mark my words, in six months, I'm going to drive through there and kill a lot of people. It's marked by a little bit of reflection tape, put columns in the ground. Somebody passed that, and I'm getting fought on everything that I'm just trying to bring back. I grew up in this town. Mr. Blakesley knows it. He gave me a beating on the fire department. You know, we're just trying to bring back what was lost. That is all I ask, but it's costing me money, and it needs to- I just need answers so I know to go forward. I've got architects that's doing the drawing. Somebody's got it in the- he's got it in the building is what my other half drew out. It's all laid out to you. Simple deal. Just want to make a nice place, that's it. That's what everybody wants. Thank you.
Mayor Mil- or Mayor Herbst, I'm sorry. What I'll do is I'll continue to work with staff and to help Mr. Rentsch get through the ordinances as they're written with regard to building code, the requirement of drawing safety, and of course, consideration of any variances that might need to be completed. I've spoke with Mr. Rentsch on the phone, and he's worked with several staff members, both in the, I believe, in the fire division and also development and engineering services. So we'll continue to work hard to help him and navigate this process.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to make a comment?
Can I ask, he can speak to two of us or three of us at a time, right?
Yes, it was just addressing all of council as a whole outside of a meeting, that was a problem.
So you can talk to two or three council members at a time, but not the whole group?
When do you want to do it?
We have an executive session right afterward, or after that, whenever you would like.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to the city manager's report. We have an information item. Mr. Went is going to introduce our new Assistant Finance Director.
Yes, sir. I'm very excited. After a very competitive recruitment for the Assistant Finance Director position, I've gone ahead and promoted Kristin Karns, who started in the role today. I'd like to invite Finance Director Leiter and Mrs. Karns up here so that you may meet her and hear a little bit about her background and qualifications for what's going to move us, help Finance Director Leiter move forward in the finance department.
Thank you. Kristin joined the Vandelia Finance Department part-time basis in 1998. In 1999, she applied for the income tax clerk position full-time and held that position until she was promoted to Tax Office Coordinator in 2001, and she held that position until she was named account clerk in 2004, where she continued to hold that position until she was promoted to Assistant Finance Director effective today. Kristin is a graduate of Tip City- Tippa Canoe High School, excuse me, and has- is working on her accounting degree currently. She has most of her primary duties as now, what she has as a count clerk, has been accounts payable. She has also been responsible for Nawa and Tri-Cities, basically the day-to-day operations and processing of those two joint ventures. She's also helped assist me personally with budget and various other duties as assigned as I've given her jobs and all kinds of fun activities, especially she's taken a very strong role, and most recently, when we have converted now to our new software, ENCODE. So very proud, very appreciative. It's been an interesting transition, but I'm very- we're very excited about the future with this new software as we're still kind of navigating through the transition. But, so on a personal note, Kristin resides in Butler Township with her husband Jeremy, who is a lieutenant with the Dayton Fire Division. They share seven children, Jeremy Jr., Kalisha, Kylie, Taven, Braylon, Adrian, and Eli. Yes. I was trying to put them in order, too. So we are very excited and very pleased. She's been an asset to the city, kind of a silent partner because she's basically- everybody that has worked here a long time knows Kristin and has worked with her in some capacity, whether they need a bill paid or question, especially, do I have enough money left in that line item? So she's been an integral part of the, not just our department, but the city. So very pleased, very proud, and looking forward to the future.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome, thank you.
One other line, or one other information item, and again, congratulations, Mrs. Karns. In the blue letter as the first attachment, I failed to include any of this, but there's the memorial, the annual memorial program on May 21st at 1:30 PM at Butler, the Butler High School Student Center. And so I didn't write about that, but I included the letter that we received from Principal Luby, and so I just wanted to make council aware of that, and I apologize for that omission.
All right, thank you. And we have an action item. Mr. Went.
We do have an action item. Thank you very much, Your Honor, and I- it's the liquor. Yes, I have it right here written. The Vandelia Division of Police received a notification from the Ohio Department of Liquor Control of a liquor permit transfer request from Scene 75 Entertainment Center on Poe Ave. Chief Althouse has no objections to this permit transfer and recommends to City Council that there be no hearing by the Ohio Department of Liquor Control objecting to this request.
Thank you. Have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move that we not request an ODLC hearing for the permanent- permit transfer of Scene 75 Entertainment Center.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Lewis and a second by Councilwoman Fars that we do not have a hearing on the ODLC requesting the transfer for the liquor permit. Any comments? Call the roll. Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Follak?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ayers?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst? Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. We have no old business, and that brings us to our first resolution of the night, that being Resolution 21-R-30. Mr. McDonald, by title only?
A resolution awarding the bid for removal and replacement of certain curbs and sidewalk requested by Development and Engineering Services to Coke Construction LLC at the lowest and best bid price of $246,081.
Thank you. Mr. Went?
Your Honor, bids were open this Tuesday, last Tuesday, for the 2021 curb and sidewalk program. Three bids were received for this project. Bids ranged from $246,081 to $257,625.50. Coke Construction was the low bidder at $246,081. Our engineer's estimate for the project was $265,000. This project includes installation of a median on West National Road west of Joseph Hyundai.
Thank you. Have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve Resolution 21-R-30 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Follak and a second by Councilman Blakesley that we approve Resolution 21-R-30 as presented. Are there any comments? Call the roll. Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Follak?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ayers?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst? Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. Next, we have Resolution 21-R-31. Mr. McDonald?
A resolution accepting the dedication of public right-of-way.
Thank you. Mr. Went?
Your Honor, North Point Development has submitted a record plan for the purpose of dedicating 0.8629 acres of land as City of Vandelia Public Right-of-Way. The proposed public right-of-way line would coincide with the City of Dayton and City of Vandelia corporate boundary line. The proposed dedication would result in an 85-foot-wide right-of-way that is in compliance with the City of Vandelia thoroughfare plan. Planning Commission voted four to zero to recommend approval.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
I move that we approve Resolution 21-R-31 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Fars and a second by Councilman Blakesley that we approve Resolution 21-R-31. Are there any comments? Call the roll. Councilmember Follak?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ayers?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst? Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. Next, we have ordinance, we have one ordinance in the first reading, and that being Ordinance 21-10. Mr. McDonald?
An ordinance approving the editing and inclusion of certain ordinances in a resolution as part of the various component codes of the codified ordinances, providing for the adoption and publication of new matter in the updated and revised codified ordinances, and repealing ordinances and resolutions in conflict therewith.
Thank you. Mr. Went?
I'm not going to say it better than the law director.
All right. Have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve Ordinance 21-10, its first reading.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Blakesley and a second by Councilman Follak that we approve Ordinance 21-10 in its first reading. Are there any comments? Call the roll. Sorry, Councilmember, where am I? Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Follak?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ayers?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst? Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. We have no ordinances in our second reading, nor do we have any emergency ordinances. And that brings us to reports from boards and commissions. The first item is a variance for wheelstop devices at 1090 West National Road. Mr. Went?
Vancon General Contractor is requesting a variance to allow the construction of a new 16,000-square-foot vehicle sales office and service facility without installing wheelstop devices for 54 existing parking spaces. The code requires that wheelstops be installed to prevent any parked vehicle, any part of a parked vehicle, from extending beyond the edge of the parking area. The Board of Zoning Appeals voted five to zero to recommend approval of this request.
Thank you. Have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move that we approve the variance at 1090 West National Road as presented.
I have a motion by Councilman Lewis and a second by Vice Mayor Ayers that we approve the variance at 1090 West National Road. Any comments?
There's several, as we know.
Variance A.
Right, we're going through each of them.
Right, I just wanted to make sure that when we look back at the record, that this one is for the wheelstop devices.
Very well.
Thank you. All right, call the roll. Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Follak?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ayers?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst? Yes, the motion carries seven zero. Next, we have a variance for the perimeter landscaping at 1090 West National Road. Mr. Went?
Vancon General Contractor is requesting a variance to allow the construction of a 16,000-square-foot vehicle sales office and service facility without installing landscaping around the perimeter of the vehicular use area in the rear yard the applicant is proposing to install. Install perimeter landscaping around, along the front and side parking areas as required. However, is requesting the variance to eliminate the requirement for 159 shrubs to be planted in the rear yard. The Board of Zoning Appeals voted five to zero to recommend approval of this request.
Thank you. Have a motion?
I move that we approve the variance on perimeter landscaping at 1090 West National Road.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Ayers and a second by Councilwoman Fars that we approve the variance for the perimeter landscaping at 1090 West National Road. Are there any comments?
I just had a question. The site plan shows the landscaping all the way to the back of the building. Is that still, that's still correct? Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Call the roll. Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Follak?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ayers?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst? Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. Next, we have a variance for the right-of-way screening at 1090 West National Road. Mr. Went?
Vancon General Contractor is requesting a variance to allow a 5.5-foot-wide setback with no landscape screening between the public right-of-way and an adjacent area. The code requires a 10-foot-wide landscape buffer area with a 3-foot continuous evergreen hedge. The Board of Zoning Appeals voted three in favor, one against, and one abstaining to recommend approval of the request.
Thank you. Have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve the variance for the right-of-way screening at 1090 West National with the condition of the applicant's new proposal of suggesting a continuous hedge and ornamental tree at the two driveway entrances. Is that sufficient enough? It's separate, it's different from what the BZI recommended, but they submitted a proposal after the fact, and that's what I'm recommending.
Right, with no bushes on the, along National.
The front.
The front, but just on the side, right. Okay.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Follak and a second by Vice Mayor Ayers to approve the right-of-way screening at 1090 West National Road with the conditions just mentioned. Are there any comments? Call the roll. Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Follak?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ayers?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst? Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. Next, we have a variance for curb opening at 1090 West National Road. Mr. Went?
Vancon General Contractor is requesting a variance to allow two curb openings on an interior lot. The code limits each interior lot to one curb opening. The applicant is proposing to construct two 30-foot-wide curb cuts with a separation of approximately 90 feet. The property has an existing curb opening that would be removed as part of this development. The Board of Zoning Appeals voted four to one to recommend approval of this request.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve the variance curb opening at 1090 West National Road.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Blakesley and a second by Councilman Lewis that we approve the variance for the curb opening at 1090 West National Road. Are there any comments?
Yes, just one. This is one that I think originally I was opposed to, but I think in review of the BZA minutes, the applicant has explained that there's an ongoing problem at the three businesses with semi-truck deliveries. And I think that's the key exception to this, is that by designating that West Drive, as they've explained is their intention, for semi-truck deliveries, trash truck hauling and that sort of thing, it will eliminate a safety, an ongoing safety issue at the three adjoining businesses that obviously get deliveries of cars on an ongoing basis. So I think that's the justification, my justification anyway, of approving this second variance, for the second curb opening for this property.
And to your point, that happened twice now in the last couple of weeks I've driven by there for that reason. So I'm in favor of that.
Thank you. Any others? Call the roll. Councilmember Follak?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ayers?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst? Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. Next, we have a variance for the parapet wall at 1090 West National Road. Mr. Went?
Vancon General Contractor is requesting a variance to allow the construction of a 16,000-square-foot vehicle sales office and service facility without providing a parapet wall on the east, west, and south-facing building facades of the proposed flat-roof building. The code requires that all sides of the building that are visible from the public street or an adjacent residential district incorporate architectural detailing on all facades in a manner consistent with the front-facing facade. Additionally, the code requires that flat roofs be concealed by a three-dimensional cornice. The applicant is proposing to construct a parapet wall only on the north-facing facade and without the necessary three-dimensional cornice treatment. The Board of Zoning Appeals voted five to zero to recommend approval with one condition.
Thank you. Have a motion?
I move that we approve the variance on parapet wall on 1090 West National Road.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Ayers and a second by Councilman Blakesley that we approve the variance for the parapet wall at 1090 West National Road. Are there any comments? Call the roll. Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Follak?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ayers?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst? Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. Next, we have a variance for windows at 1090 West National Road. Mr. Went?
Vancon General Contractor is requesting a variance to allow the construction of a 16,000-square-foot vehicle sales office and service facility without installing windows on the east and west building facades that occupy at least 25% of the total wall area. The code requires that the building elevations, which are visible from a public street, contain windows occupying at least 25% of the wall area. However, the applicant is proposing to install windows that comprise 4.5% of the east and west-facing facades. The applicant will comply with the 25% window requirement on the front-facing facade. The Board of Zoning Appeals voted five to zero to recommend approval, subject to one condition.
Thank you. Have a motion?
I move that we approve the variance for the windows at 1090 West National Road.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Fars and a second by Councilman Lewis that we approve the variance for the windows at 1090 West National Road. Are there any comments?
With the condition?
I think the law director-
Was that with the, there was a condition on there?
With one condition, yes.
With the condition of the BZI? Okay, thank you.
Any more comments?
No.
All right, call the roll. Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Follak?
Yes.
Councilmember Fars?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ayers?
Yes.
Mayor Herbst? Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. And lastly, we have a variance for residential screening at 1090 West National Road.
Vancon General Contractor is requesting a variance to allow an outdoor display, storage, and sales facility without providing full screening on the facility from the adjacent residential district. The code requires that all outdoor display, storage, and sales facilities be screened to their full height from view when adjacent to residential districts. The applicant is proposing a 6-foot-wide green space buffer and maintains a 6-foot-tall privacy fence between the vehicular use area and the rear property line. However, the outdoor display will still be visible to the adjacent residential district. The Board of Zoning Appeals voted five to zero to recommend approval of this request with one condition.
Have a motion?
Make a motion we approve the variance screening at 1090 West National, including the one condition from the BZA.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Blakesley and a second by Councilwoman Fars that we approve the variance for residential screening at 1090 West National Road as presented with the condition noted.
Can I actually suggest a modification? I brought it up last time, and that is that I would like to amend or modify the condition that they replace or extend the fence to an 8-foot-tall fence. And I talked with staff today. The Nissan property already has an 8-foot-high privacy fence, and I think for consistency purposes and to provide the same level of screening for the residents behind the 1090 West National property, we would, you know, require that privacy fence to be the consistent across both property lines. And I think we can, if we approve that condition, that would incorporate, I mean, that would take care of any additional variance. Is that correct?
Yes, you could approve that. Mr. Went is our parliamentarian, but we would require the motion to be amended then to adjust for that 8-foot fence.
Okay.
Yeah, I spoke with Larry after the last council meeting, and he has no problem with doing that. So he's fine with that.
Then we would just need Mr. Blakesley to amend his, if he's so inclined.
Yes, I will make amendment to the motion. Councilman Follak's comments about the 8-foot-high fence to continue.
Okay. Mrs. Fars, you still want to second that?
She's thinking about it.
The, the is either replace or add to. Is that what you, is that your suggestion? Is that what you said?
I think it's just-
Amend?
Amend to an 8-foot fence, correct?
You're going to build a new 8-foot fence.
That's not what was said. It was said to alter-
I would replace-
Alter or replace.
I would ask the applicant to replace the existing 6, I mean, it's in poor condition.
Yeah.
I don't know how you can modify it to get it to 8-foot. So I would say to replace it-
We could.
-with an 8-foot fence.
Yeah, and I agree to that.
Second.
Okay. Any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Follak?
Yes.
Councilmember Farce?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ayers?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. Next, we have the Planning Commission minutes of March 23rd, 2021. Are there any comments? And that brings us to council comments. Mr. Went? Not, I'm sorry, Mr. McDonald.
I was going to say, I actually have two comments for a change. First thing is I didn't catch it right away, but I went back and looked at it. There is a typo in the title for Ordinance 21-10. It says, "An Ordinance Approving the Editing and Inclusion of Certain Ordinances and a Resolution." There is no resolution that's part of that. So when we have it for the second reading, it will not contain that. It's just a typo. That shouldn't have been there. So I just wanted to bring that to council's attention. And then I also just wanted to say that over the years, I have had the opportunity to work with Ms. Carnes and have always found her to be very knowledgeable, and it's a pleasure to work with her, and I congratulate her on her promotion. Thank you.
Mr. Went?
Well, I don't want to steal your thunder, Mayor, but since you called on me first, I will say that today we had a very positive, Mayor Herbs and I had a very positive meeting with Senator Naraj Antani. We discussed many items pertaining to the community, including commercial truck traffic, and we look forward to just continuing the dialogue in pursuit of alleviating the negative externalities that are caused by the developments happening west of the airport. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Blakeslee?
Okay. Couple things, actually three or so. First, start off with 70 years, and I'm not 70, but that's the number of years anniversary for the National Prayer, Day of Prayer. And I just wanted to point that out. I know that that's been mentioned in the past, and I've attended a couple times, and it's quite inspiring. I've had some keynote speakers, and so it's a good time for reflection. And that's being held here in Vandelia at the Church on Elva, Inglewood Government Center on West National, and downtown Dayton Courthouse Square. So I just wanted to put that out there. And then also congrats to, congratulations to Lieutenant Swafford, a man that's dedicated a number of, 13 years to be exact, of devotion and, and time and, and expertise to Vandelia, and has contributed quite a bit to, to the city. I think we had heard once before about some of the programs that he's come up with, that he's inspired, implementing body-worn camera program, the drone program, just to name a few. Also, he developed the Endangered Missing Adults and Children Program. I know that his presence will be very missed, quite missed, his talents and expertise and his leadership. And so I wish him well, and I think all council would do the same. So, and I also want to thank Mr. Went for having our Arbor Day celebration and how we incorporate that into being a tree city. So, and I like the little Dr. Seuss reference to it, the Lorax, as if anybody has heard. So I thought that was a great way to segue into that, that promotion, and to Officer Weiner to also help be out there promoting with, with the rest of staff. So want to congratulate them. And Ms. Carnes, congratulations on the promotion.
Thank you. Councilwoman Woods?
I just want to thank the staff and the council members who worked in connection with the Wright State University project and the Kohler Project. There was a lot of time and effort put into that, and it's very appreciated for all of the work that you've done. And then I did want to say that Mr. Went and I saved a tree several weeks ago, a beautiful little tree there across the street from my office. They were getting ready to tear down within minutes of his phone call, and it's still standing there. So we're contributing to our tree city.
Really appreciate Mark Warner from North Point helping us out with that tree. So, good work there.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Lewis?
Just a quick observation, and I meant to interject when they were going over the brand identity presentation. It occurred to me, and I know that the implementation is scheduled over a number of years, and that's to create some continuity, but also to save us money in terms of rebranding. But my limited knowledge of marketing is that in order to make impact, generally you try to do as much as you can at once and to reinforce it and to reinforce it. And I might suggest that we contemplate that in so much as we might get, we spent a lot of money on that study, that we may get more bang for the buck, so to speak, if the implementation is accelerated. Just, just a thought.
Let's jump on that while Mr. Lewis recommends that.
Yes, absolutely, and so-
And that, and that's not normally my tack to want to spend any money, but that, I, I think there's an economy of scale there.
Anything else?
Want to go again?
No, sir.
Thank you. Councilman Follak?
Just again to congratulate Ms. Carnes on her promotion. I think it's great when we can promote from within the organization and advance careers from, for our staff. So congratulations. I just echo Councilman Blakeslee's comments about Arbor Day. I was out at Helkey Park on Friday. Rudy Wells and the Parks and Rec staff did a great job organizing that event, especially after two years of hiatus from COVID and torrential downpours the year before. So the kids seemed to really enjoy that event. And then lastly, I just want to thank and congratulate Mr. David Marlowe. I know that this is his last council meeting before he departs the city and heads on his westward adventure. So congratulations. Thank you for your three years of service to the organization. You'll be most, thank you.
Councilwoman Farce?
I want to say something about all the variances we had today, and it's very unusual for us to have that many variances on a project. But I will say that the team that came in at our last meeting to our workshop and went through these with us one by one, I think, spelled out the necessity for those and the advantage that those presented to the, to the business. So I think that was real positive. It's not something we normally see, and if anybody's watching, it's not something we normally do. But they were well warranted in that occasion.
And they didn't prejudice the public?
Yes, yes.
Oh, yeah.
Also, I wasn't able to go this year to the Arbor Day celebration, though it's, it's a remarkable event combining our schools and our, our staff. But I wanted to remind people that we have a tree program with our Parks and Rec program, and there's a form online that you can purchase a tree, and now there's a new form that you can buy or order a plaque, either that hangs on the tree or it goes into the ground, which I think makes a big difference to a lot of people if they want to do a tree in memory of someone. So it's very available and very easy to do, and if you need help selecting a tree, Rudy Wells or Steve Clark, I'm sure, would be willing to help you. So since we are such a big tree city, and we celebrate Arbor Day, I thought you might like to take a look at that link. I think that is it. Thank you. Other than congratulations, and congratulations to Lieutenant Swafford. He's, he's been such a solid part of our police department for so long. I hate to see those people leave, but it's, I'm sure he'll be happy that way. So, thank you.
Vice Mayor Ayers?
Nothing, thank you.
All right. And then I will close this up then. First of all, I wanted to congratulate Ms. Carnes, and as Mr. Follak mentioned, it's always good to promote from within when we can, and I think that's a testament to Ms. Leiter and the bench that she's built in her department. So we appreciate that and look forward to seeing more of you and working with you in the future. Also, I wanted to mention Mr. Swafford's time here at the city, you know, 13 years, and we wish him well in his retirement. And I also wanted to congratulate David Marlowe on his decision to head out west and enjoy whatever it is you're going to enjoy. But, you know, we appreciate the time that you spent here with the City of Vandelia. We've learned a lot from you, and I know you're going to do well. So congratulations. And I'd also like to wish Councilman Blakeslee a birthday this Wednesday. That is correct. You've got another birthday coming up, right?
And it's not 70.
It's not 70. All right.
That was the anniversary of the other prayer.
All right.
But thank you.
[inaudible]
55.
Sure. Oh, Cinco de Mayo. Yes, that's, yes, thank you for saying that.
All right. And last but not least, we have, Ms. Farce has a birthday coming up here, what, the 8th?
Yes, yes, it is.
Well, that's right.
Did somebody say 70?
All right. I expect you to sing to both of us.
Sing?
Yeah, sing to both of us, right?
In executive session. Okay, we will sing in executive session.
All right.
All right. Well, thank you. That concludes my comments. We need to briefly adjourn this to, yeah, need to briefly adjourn into executive session and anticipate taking action immediately thereafter. So it's recommended that council adjourn to executive session, hold discussions with the city attorney concerning disputes that are subject to pending court.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Follak and a second by Councilman Lewis that we go into executive session. Call the roll.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Follak?
Yes.
Councilmember Farce?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ayers?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero.
Can I go tell him to wait outside for me?
Huh?
Can I go tell him to wait?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. After discussing with the city attorney disputes that are subject to pending court action, do I have a motion to authorize the city manager to enter into a mutual settlement agreement and release of the Chevey LLC regarding the Knights Inn nuisance case?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Lewis and a second by Councilman Blakeslee that we enter the agreement. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Follak?
Yes.
Councilmember Farce?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewis?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ayers?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. This meeting is adjourned.